Meeting to order, January the 4th, 2021. The Honorable Tom Arnett will give the invocation.
My pleasure, Jesus. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for this night that we are together here. We've gone through a very challenging 2020 in that as we move forward into 2021, we will face a lot more challenges as a county. And we look forward to this, Lord Jesus, with your help, that we will make the right decisions and guide this district and the county. And it is all in your name, Lord Jesus. Thank you.
Amen. At this time, I have the honor of presenting before those of you who are here tonight that we would elect a new chairman for the York County Council. Is there a nomination for chairman?
Yes, I nominate Kristy Cox for chairman.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposedes? The ayes have it. We have a new chairman, the Honorable Ms. Kristy Cox.
Thank you, Bump, and I appreciate my colleagues allowing me to serve in this position. Thank you for giving that back. At this time, do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate.
Yeah, I'd like to move forward with a motion to nominate Henry Winkler for vice chair.
Robert.
Robert. That would be great.
He's got a new name now.
About Robert.
I mean, Henry.
There you go.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Mr. Winkler, congratulations, you're vice chair.
Thank you.
Good job, Henry.
At this time, do we have any oath of office? No oath of office. No appearances. At this time, we have the public comment. For folks who actually signed up on this sign-up sheet, I'm going to read your name and allow you to come forward. Let me explain to you, when you come forward, you need to state your name and your address, and you will have two minutes to speak. You will be limited to two minutes. If you are here on an item that is a public hearing item, you will not be limited if you wait until the public hearing time to make your comments. So typically, what folks do is defer that. Some folks didn't realize when you signed up for that, that you were actually signing up for the two minutes. So when I call your name, if you'd like to wait until the public hearing comments so that your comments aren't limited, if you'll just let me know that. Steve, and I can't read some of the writing, Steve.
Barbary.
Barbary. Would you like to what?
I don't think we have to sign up as being here for what we're here for. I'm going to let Josh do. We'll wait until the public.
Okay. Tommy Elkins?
I'm the same rate.
Okay. Kathryn Newton?
Same.
All right. Jamie Newton?
Same.
And Tammy Gregory? Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
I move that we pull item seven from consent.
All right, we'll move item seven to number two under new business.
Move to approve, has amended. Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Hearing none. And I do want to make sure, is Allison Love, is she able to speak now? Is she unmuted?
I did.
All right, public hearing, rezoning action. Public hearing and consider first reading case number 20-11, tax map number 40800120 to rezone from AGC to RUD. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? I know that we have overflow, so I'm going to look to you guys to tell me if I need to wait on that. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? You will come forward, state your name and your address.
Thank you. My name is Josh Elkins. I'm at 3657 Armstrong Ford Road. And I'd like to give this to council. I made eight copies, one for each of you and one for the clerk as well. And again, my name is Josh. Thank you for your time tonight. We prepared this packet as a community of the Armstrong Ford Road community. Over the last 30 years, we have all collectively moved into this area. We do not feel that this rezoning is cohesive or congruent with the things that we have done with our properties. Out of the 24 properties that are currently active on Armstrong Ford Road, over 15 of those are currently involved in agricultural use. Five of those are operating as farms at this time. The land use is compared to across the road with Perla and Dave's Road area. That is not the same uses and the same setup as we have on Armstrong Ford Road in our community now. We don't think that this RUD with an unlimited section would work in a cohesive environment. There is RUD available on Armstrong Ford Road if you look at the zoning map in the packet that we gave you. All of those properties have deed restrictions. They either cannot have mobile homes, they have to be a certain square footage, they can only have so many homes per an acre. So they actually are zoned RUD, but they are more congruent with the AGC zoning that is on the other side of Armstrong Ford Road now. So we're asking that this be not happen. And when I say we, if you look on the third page of your packet, you'll see that there's over 80%, almost 90% of all of the addresses on Armstrong Ford Road that are opposed to this.
Thank you, Mr. Elkins. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against?
I'm not against, but I do own the property. Can I speak?
Certainly, please come forward.
Me and my husband was helping one of my sons and one of his neighbors to get a place. And so that's why we wanted to separate the property for them, to help them. So my understanding that you can do it and shouldn't have no problem, that was what we was told when we first bought the property. And that was back in 2012. So we would like to have it done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against? Now's the time.
Yes, my name is Brian Shaw. I live at 3595 Armstrong Ford Road. I've been there over 30 years. When I first moved into the community, started out in a mobile home. Since then, we have built a three-bedroom, 2,400-square-foot home, along with many of the other mobile homes that were in the community, have upgraded to single-dwelling units. And this, what they're trying to do to change the zoning, not conducive to what is in the community and in the neighborhood, and what we fear is that some of the conditions that we see across McConnell's Highway and some of the mobile home parks that are over there, we just don't think that that's coherent to what we're doing in the community. And I just wanted to speak against this rule.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against? I know that there are some folks who, anyone here who is against, who doesn't want to speak, if you'll just raise your hand, and we will acknowledge you. Okay. Please come forward.
My name's Leslie Workman. I represent both a homeowner as well as a horse farm. I've been there for 12 years. We've got a lot of agricultural out there. Now we're getting some families that have come in, they have small children, so it's really getting to be a residential area, but it's always been agricultural. And we're really trying to maintain the five-acre-plus that's been out there. That is what attracted people to that area in the first place. So the road is very small on Armstrong. It's a single road, and it really only accommodates one car. So already with the additional traffic, people have to pull over for somebody to drive down the road. So we would really like to keep the small agricultural family tradition that we have had.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who wishes to speak against? Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have another motion?
I move to approve for discussion.
Second.
Motion and a second, Mr. Roddy.
Obviously, this is the first, I've heard of this situation going on, and it's not even in my district. But just listening to some of the individuals who are in opposition, it sounds like there's a minimum of five acres required, and this individual's wanting to subdivide the four acres to possibly put four more homes. Am I correct?
Two, two more. Just one.
Two more, okay.
Two more.
And it seems like there's a concern with the minimum square footage that could possibly go into these homes, these two additional homes. So one of my questions that I will have and just present before this council is, if there was a minimum square footage established through the application process as far as conditions, would that be something that would appease those people, those individuals who are speaking against it? Because it sounds like they're concerned with the size of the lot, the possible square footage of the home. We've been able to work through some of these challenges in the past. I don't think we can do too much with the size of the lot, because it seems like it's already smaller than what's already there if there's a five-acre minimum, and this one is four acres. And maybe with some deed restrictions, could, I mean, the applicant and the neighbors would probably have to get together and work something out to bring something forward. I was just putting out a possible way to consider and for us to work towards a common ground for something to happen. I'm not saying that it would happen, but we've seen in the past where conditions have been put forth by the applicant and work with the surrounding neighbors to come up with something in the middle.
Any other discussion?
I'll just say that normally I am very reluctant to kill something on a first reading, just because I want everyone to have the opportunity to work together and to look at things. But I share and I understand all of your concerns out there about what's going on. But I've pretty much made it a policy, as far as I can remember, I don't think I've ever voted to kill something on a first reading. We have done that before, but I think I've voted against it each time. I would ask that the applicant reach out to the neighbors, the neighbors talk to each other. But as it stands right now, I will support this on the first reading tonight, but I have some grave concerns about whether or not I would support it on second reading.
So I do have a quick question. In listening to the information that you all shared, and appreciate this, it sounds like all of the property that you have, if it's surrounded, the existing property surrounding this property that needs to be changed, correct? Is that what I'm getting? Okay.
This particular property gives the very entrance of all of our property.
Okay.
So if you change that, it changes the entire interest of our property.
Okay.
It's a reviving act.
And there's a, it looks like you do have, and you may have mentioned it, a concern about traffic too, based on this. Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I frankly agree with Councilman Roddy that either a thumbs up or down on this seems like a rather obtuse solution, that there may be a more elegant way to come to some agreement that works for everybody. And I also share Councilman Winkler's concerns with killing anything at first reading if it seems like there's some hope that something may be worked out. So I do intend to support it on first reading. That doesn't necessarily mean I'll support it all the way through, but just with the hope that something could be worked out with the property owner and the rest of the folks here.
Any other discussion?
Could I make one more comment?
Sure.
I would strongly encourage the applicant to consider working with the surrounding neighbors to possibly suggest deed restrictions, minimum square footage on the home, because those are some of the things that seems to be prevalent in the concern. And me personally, I don't think adding two more homes or two more families or two more cars traveling, where the average car per household is probably two and a half, they say. But those are some of the things that I've seen in the past, that where there was a big developer coming to try to work with some of the area neighbors, those are some of the things that are typically put forth in something like this. When you do have so many neighbors that come out and speak against something, and the main ones that I see is the square footage of the home, some kind of deed restriction, because what could possibly happen is those homeowners who have five acres now can come back and say, well, I want to split my five acres up and put three more homes on it. You know, so we have to be careful and mindful of those type actions down the road if we do this. So just putting it out in the atmosphere that if there's a way that this could be worked out, please, ma'am, reach out to some of the neighbors and fully disclose what the intentions of the property is, and maybe you can find a common ground with it.
Mr. Husbands, are these deed restrictions, is that something that's even possible?
Well, what I'd like to recommend, if that's the course we take, I think the homeowner could voluntarily put those restrictions on their property, and I think that would be more appropriate than trying to make it part of the rezoning request. So it may be that if they do have these meetings and they agree that they're willing to restrict the property for a certain-sized house or a certain-type of house, that that be covered under their discussions and their deed restriction. I don't think it's appropriate to make it part of a motion for a rezoning or a condition to the rezoning.
Well, I'll wrap this up. This is my district. I've been out there, I've taken a look at this. I don't support it, and it's a hard, this is a hard one. Typically pro-property rights, and I think I understand council members' interest in wanting to get this through first reading. Just so you know, since a lot of you came out, there are three readings that are required. This is the first reading, so there are still two more readings. You are encouraged to continue to come out to work with the applicant, to see if there's a way to work something out that would make you feel comfortable with that if that passes this council. I do not support the rezoning for a variety of reasons. One is, we've had some trouble when we are doing, basically allowing increased density, which is what this does. It allows it to go to RUD, which allows a lot of uses which aren't compatible with AGC use. I think when you purchase property as AGC and you're allowed one unit to five acres, that's what you have, unless the urban services boundary extends out that would allow for the increased density or the increased commercial uses that are allowed within the RUD. I think that's a potential problem when we're trying to figure out where to put the infrastructure needs for the community that it should not extend out there. For instance, if you allow it in this case, then basically all of that and any other applicant that would come out there, how would you deny them the request to do that? So I do not support this. I will not vote to support this one, because I don't think there's an appropriate way to fix it. But I do want you to understand that it's not unusual for council to allow this to get past first reading, to see if there's a way to resolve it that you all feel comfortable with, but encourage you to come back, and you can sign up and speak at the public hearing if, in fact, it passes here tonight. If you have any other questions, you certainly can reach out to me, since I am your representative. With that said, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
No. And I guess we need to hear Allison.
Allison, you there?
Can you hear us, Allison?
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
There you go.
I'm a no.
All right, motion passes four to three. Move on to second public hearing, rezoning action. Public hearing and consider first reading case number 20-12, tax map number 720000260 to rezone from RC1 to LI. Let everyone clear out before we... Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor?
I've been your public speaker, anybody. First moved down here in 85.
Sir, we're not, is it about this public hearing matter?
Yeah, all I'm going to say is we still want small slum being built right outside you going on Armstrong Ford Road.
I encourage you to come out to second reading and put your name on the sign-up sheet when you come to second reading. Thank you, sir. Anyone here wishes to speak in favor? Anyone wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none. Do we have another motion?
Move to deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
This is one, I just said I'm reluctant to vote no on a first reading, and I am. But this one, staff and planning commission, both recommend deny. And so this is one time when I will vote no on a first, because our staff, our planning commission, everyone else is recommending against it. So I will vote no with this one as well.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Rezoning action, public hearing and consider first reading case number 20-13, tax map number 67000013 to rezone from UD to RC2. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of closing public hearings, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Do we have another motion?
I move that we approve the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Under new business, council to consider first reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 154, subdivision code to remove development criteria for the reduction in lot sizes, to reduce the spacing of certain buffer tree plantings, to establish cluster subdivisions, which includes the following provisions: purpose, applicability, open space standards, perimeter buffer, and subdivision design. To amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155, zoning code to remove the required amenities and density bonuses for residential plan developments, to differentiate the required impervious ratio requirements between uses, to revise minimum lot sizes for residential uses, to establish lot sizes for cluster subdivision, to simplify the residential density table, to amend the open space section in its entirety to remove the site amenities from the commercial design guidelines, to amend the tree protection section, to add a definition for tree save area, to clarify the process to remove a grand tree, to clarify which developments require a tree save area, to clarify when an aerial photograph may replace physical tree survey, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Do we have a motion?
Need to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I'll just say, I think it would be a good idea if management could work with our two new council members, because we've gotten a lot of feedback in meetings and stuff about this, and I'm sure they're probably, I know if I was sitting in their shoes in the first meeting, I'd be kind of lost after Kristy read all that. So I'd like to ask the management work with them and bring them up to speed on that.
Yeah, I do, I like this, what I'm seeing here in regards to this discussion. One question I have is that cluster division opportunity that they have, they're, from a request standpoint, they're going to be able to either request a zone or opportunity to cluster build and/or traditional zoning build, correct? I mean, this is a second option for the builder, correct?
Correct. Either option would be available to them. There's certainly a lot more they need to do in order to qualify for the cluster development, but it is an option available to them.
Okay, it's a great option. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of?
I think, David, at second, Kristy, at second reading, there's going to be a, like a presentation on this for council. Is that correct?
There's a public hearing scheduled for that, and we are happy to do a presentation. It does, it is a fairly complicated ordinance, so we'll be happy to do a presentation at that meeting, and also talk with the new council members or anybody else that would like to speak with us to get some clarification on that.
Okay, I think that'd be great. Even if we just hit the high notes during that presentation, I think the public is, you know, when they hear all of that, that it sounds a little scary, but it's all good. We've been working on this for a really long time, so I'm glad it's finally on an agenda tonight.
We are arranging for some meetings with the development community as well, so they understand what's being proposed.
All those in favor of first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none. Allison, you're a yes, we know. Can you just clarify that?
I'm a yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm talking too fast. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving to number seven and consent, council to approve utility relocation agreements with Duke Energy, York County Natural Gas Authority, and Comporium totaling $436,853.47 for Penny's Three Project 11149-008J, FMSB Sprat Street Intersection Improvement, and authorizing the county manager to execute the relocation agreements. Do we have a motion?
Move to defer to the January 19th meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I do have, just a quick discussion on that. This here, the funding on this, is there opportunity from a state perspective on the South Carolina Infrastructure Bank to eventually help fund some of this? Has there been any discussion from legislators that we've heard of to fund maybe? And I was informed there may be an opportunity from the Infrastructure Bank on getting some type of funding along the lines of?
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be the case with the Penny's project, but Patrick Hamilton is here, I think he's in the room. But the audience being deferred, we can certainly get that answer to you prior to it passing, but I don't think that's an option.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All those in favor of deferral, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Committee and other reports, I don't believe we have any. Are there any council member, new non-agenda comments?
Of course, I have one.
Mr. Roddy?
I just wanted to take this time to welcome our two new members, Brandon and Tom. I've known Brandon since I think he was in the ninth grade playing football over at Northwestern, and I've had an opportunity to speak to Tom since he was newly elected. I think we got two great council members coming on board, and I wish both of you the best of luck and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would say Bump stole my thunder. I was going to say welcome as well. Y'all both have my cell phone, if there's any questions I can help y'all with, any of us up here, I'd be glad to help out.
You got it. Thank you.
And I'll share those sentiments. It's not every day we have not one but two new council members joining, and it's even more rare that they both happen to be good friends, and I'm excited to work with both of you.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. Well, I'd just like to say, I, this is, we're, I'm very excited about this opportunity and feel very welcome, and I'm looking forward to being a part of the team here. So excellent. Absolutely.
And I'll just say, I'm eager to serve. I'm ready to learn, get my hands dirty. I've been doing a lot of learning, but ready to actually start doing so. I've been doing a lot of learning, but ready to actually start doing something. I've been very quiet tonight, but just trying to get, get my head around everything.
And Brandon, you don't, you don't have to call me coach anymore.
No, actually, I think we should make a motion now.
There you go. That's a motion. There you go. Well, it's such an opportunity to serve the public, so very honored to serve in the public. Absolutely.
Allison, anything from you?
Bump, you didn't let anybody take my seat beside you, did you?
No, I made sure you were still there.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate y'all enduring me. I had every intention of being there for your first meeting, Brandon and Tom, and I am just home bored. I feel fine, it's kind of a crazy thing, but, you know, I'm leaning more toward Bump on the wear your mask and wash your hands and all that good stuff, because, you know, sometimes, I guess, you know, like, I didn't know I had this, and I've maybe had it for a little while, and I have avoided going around people, but now I've got a store full of employees working without me, and I've got a council and a county moving forward without me, and I miss, I miss it. I promise, I miss it. So, but thanks for enduring this crazy phone call tonight.
Madam Chair, excuse me. Point of order, on number one, public hearing, could you please clarify Ms. Love's vote on that item? It was the denial, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, wrong one, on number two, the rezoning that was denied from the planning commission and the staff recommendation. The clerk needs clarification on Ms. Love's vote.
Yes, I was, I was, I made a motion to deny that. I mean, I didn't make a motion, but my vote was to deny.
Thank you.
That's the one that passed, 43.
Okay. Well, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm glad 2020 is behind us. I am really looking forward to 2021 and all of the good things that can happen. I'm really excited to see all that we can do to work together towards making our county better, and I'm sharing everyone and welcoming you, and you've been here out sitting in the audience, and now it's good to have you sitting up here with us, and we're glad to have you here. Do we have a motion for executive session? I'm sorry, are there any citizen concerns? None?
I'll move that we move into executive session to discuss a contractual matter being the convenience center.
Second.
Second. I'm sorry, could I add an item or two to that?
You certainly may.
If we could have a discussion, a contractual, or economic development incentive for, how specific do we need to be, Michael, with that?
Project name?
Healthcare.
Thank you. It's project healthcare?
Yes. And then finally, contractual matter with intergovernmental agreement with the magistrates, York County magistrates.
Is that a friendly amendment? Do you agree to that amendment? Joel?
I do.
One second. All those in favor of moving into executive session, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we are in executive session. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Yes. Motion one is to allow staff to issue a 60-day notice to the City of York for termination of our current intergovernmental agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Second motion is to give staff authority to continue discussions regarding the convenience center as discussed in executive session.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.